Welcome to the Spokane City Council briefing session for April 10. Ms. Farnsworth, would you please call the roll?
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingo.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kneer.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmembers Apom.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right, we're going to head right into briefing for the April 17 meeting. City Administrator Johnny Perkins.
Thank you, Council President, Members of the City Council, Johnny Perkins, City Administrator. I hope everybody had a fantastic Easter weekend with their family and loved ones. Starting with the advanced briefing agenda for Monday, April 17, consent agenda. Item number one is a service level agreement with the Spokane Regional Emergency Communications, and I'm going to turn it over to Council President Beggs for a brief comment.
Yes, so we put this out until next week because we understood that the county commissioners would not be able to act until then to make the adjustment on the Shrek Board that would comply with the ordinance we need in order to join. We might consider a temporary inter-local agreement while they're working on that, but hopefully on the 17th, we'll get the news that they have acted. So, and the Shrek Board has said that they have no objection to that change, so.
Is that the board, the board?
The Shrek Board said they have no objection to us, to council appointing one of the Shrek Board members, but only the county commissioners can change that.
All right, thank you, Council President. Heading then to consent items numbers two and three. Number two is an agreement to purchase from Freightliner Northwest for a dump body, and item three is a contract extension with Mega Wash for car wash services at the Fleet Services Department. Our presenter is our Director of Fleet Services, Mr. Rick Giddings.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Good afternoon, City Council. Item number two is an approval for actually a price increase for the installation of a dump body that we ordered for an F-550 for code enforcement about a year and a half ago. Because vehicle specs were not available at the time of ordering, a couple of things got left off that quote, namely reinforced subframe and some painting. The additional items will cost $6,213 and will bring the total installed price to $45,075.65. Any questions on that one? Okay. And the item three is an increase to our Mega Wash contract. We've had a contract with Mega Wash for SPD car washes for, since 2020. Last two years, we've slightly exceeded the $49,500 yearly spend, so we are asking for an approval, an approval to increase our current contract by $15,000 and to enter our third yearly renewal with Mega Wash for a revised total of $65,000 per year. Yes.
And when would this contract have to go back out for another RFP? Is it a five-year or three-year?
This is, this is a five-year.
This is a five-year.
Yeah, so we've got two more years on it after this year.
How do those car washes affect the vehicles, the outside of the vehicles?
How do they, as far as protection of the, so getting the salt off.
Right.
Yeah, getting the dirt, getting the salt off there protects the paint. Of course, the image of a, of a clean vehicle is important as well, but mainly it gets the, the salt, especially now that we're using salt. The salt on the undercarriage is very damaging to vehicles and wears things faster, so getting that off there is pretty critical.
Do those car washes damage the vehicles at all?
They can, but, you know, so we, the reason that the city went away from our own car wash is because our car wash was taking some of the extraneous equipment and damaging it. So, it can do that. I haven't heard of any particular instances with Mega Wash. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Giddings. Item four on the consent agenda is a low bid for a project in the Audubon Down River Neighborhood. Our presenter this afternoon is Mr. Dan Fuller.
Thank you. Item four is proposed low bid contract for the TGA Mina Drive Siphon Vaults, which is the last Cochrane Basin project I will bring to you. This is a blank agenda item. As you can see, we just opened bids at 115. Bids and qualifications will be reviewed today and tomorrow, and a final recommendation to award forwarded to you for next week's current agenda. The parent low bidder, Holme Construction of Spokane, is a firm that we've worked with on many occasions and in fact is doing the TGA Mina Road Project right now. Project constructs a large buried, a couple of large buried diversion vaults connecting the currently under construction 60-inch siphon under TGA Mina Drive with the existing 60-inch trunk main, as well as replacing the existing 60-inch 70-year-old siphon. Two bids received, pending final review. The low bid appears to be about $1,001,001 or about 33% over the engineer's estimate.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller. Item number five on the consent agenda for the advanced briefing on Monday, April 17 is an agreement to amend the contract with Spokane River Stewardship Partners, and our presenter is Mr. Jeff Donovan. Mr. Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Good afternoon, City Council. Here to seek your approval on a contract amendment with Spokane River Stewardship Partners. The change here is the cost share and funding allocations got updated and Kaiser Aluminum withdrew from the group, so it's just the other seven dischargers and a Vista. Questions?
Yes, so with, with Kaiser pulling out, I know, Libby, we talked about this a little bit, but what, what does that mean with their, in their relation to the, to the river? What does that mean? What are they trying to signal by pulling out of this deal?
I think it's more, at least based on my explanation I heard, it was a budgetary issue and, and just came down to, you know, priority differences and things of that nature.
But we still expect them to hold to sort of the agreements that they've held before, not necessarily the exact ones, but they continue to?
Yes, and they're still involved on the Toxics Task Force and other TMDL efforts, and I don't think they've indicated any, any kind of change in direction. It's just more kind of, kind of this specific group they were going to pull out of.
Can you tell us more about, it might be just a different name for me, but I don't recall hearing about this before. So, what, what is it and what do they do and how much does it cost us?
That's a good question. So, the annual amount is $40,000 for this year. The group was formed in 2008, kind of around the time there was a lot of contention around the dissolved oxygen TMDL process where they're, you know, trying to figure out the cleanup plan for the river, determine our next level treatment stuff, what all the dischargers have to do. So, it's a group of all the Spokane River dischargers, so it essentially includes Spokane, Spokane County, Inland Empire Paper, and Telma Kaiser, and then the three Idaho dischargers as well, and then also a Vista.
And what does that money buy us? What, what services and who provides those services?
Okay, so for this, it's the Dally Environmental, Lisa Dally Wilson. She's the facilitator and kind of technical lead for the group, so she kind of helps bring everyone together every month, do, do monthly meetings, and then also, you know, facilitates the group and kind of preps for task force, TMDL type stuff.
And this isn't the Spokane River Forum, is it?
This is, yeah, it's a different group.
It's a different group? And does everyone pay the same or is, I'm trying to figure out what the total budget is for having these monthly meetings.
It's, it's about, I think, $100,000 total. The city pays a pretty good chunk of it just because we have the highest flows and it's based on, the cost shares are broken down by each discharger's flow, so you can kind of see it broken down. And then with, I guess with Kaiser withdrawing from the group, it was agreed to, at least for this year, to keep everything the same, and it would just be kind of, she would dial back her time spent on it if she had to.
Well, it may actually not change a huge amount. The, the cost breakdown for city's participation is basically two-ninths, so it may change a little bit because it'd be two-eighths, but because the city has a stormwater component and a wastewater treatment plant, we pay a portion off the top instead of having it be flow-based.
So, what's, I guess, and Libby, maybe, and either one of you, but, so I know there's the Spokane River Forum, which maybe Ecology is sponsoring, but it seems like, kind of similar, like what is the intersection or why is this needed or, and I just got something from Ecology that they're reevaluating the Toxics Task Force. I'm just trying to get the big picture of how all these three things work together.
You bring up a really interesting point. There's a lot of acronyms with regards to the Spokane River. And so this was the Spokane River Stewardship Partners, which was established back in 2008, 2006 as a collaborative way for all of the dischargers to talk about and to evaluate the, and prepare for the DOT MDL, which is dissolved oxygen and the impacts on Lake Spokane. So, this is one of the older organizations that provides that collaboration of all the dischargers. Then you have other acronyms, which is the Spokane River Regional Toxic Task Force, which was established in 2011, 12, with the intent to address toxics and PCBs. It was kind of a new thing in our permit. They were looking at doing a TMDL for PCBs and put a numeric sort of parameters around that element. And in exchange, or as an offset for a TMDL, they came up with the narrative approach and the Toxic Task Force was evolved. That Toxic Task Force is, I don't know, the shelf life on that is more limited because now they're looking at a PCB TMDL. EPA has committed to going down that path and during that process. Then there's the reformation, if you will, of a more community-based type of task force to help with that process. Once EPA sets the TMDL, then you'll be into an implementation plan. So, the task force is in kind of a state of change. And then you have the Spokane River Forum, which I don't have as much information on that, but as I recall, it was set up with collaboration with the Department of Ecology to look, I think, at the whole ecosystem of the Spokane River. Does that help?
It does help, I'm just.
And I think there's other ones.
Okay.
Like acronyms, but.
I'm just, so it sounds like this partnership is really the dischargers. The River Forum is the whole community, including the dischargers. The toxics, same thing, except it's narrowly focused on toxics. So, okay. Aaron.
Thanks. So, Councilmember Cathcart.
So, does each member pay the $40,000 or is there a sliding scale for each member?
Yeah, it's, it's kind of in the packet a little bit.
And how, how much do we pay specifically, the city of Spokane?
We pay 40.
$40,000 is our contribution and the total, I guess it's not totalized here. Oh, yeah, $129,000 was the total amount.
And so what, I guess, what is the actual value that we as a city entity or the taxpayers get for the $40,000?
I would say it's a combination of things. There's an information sharing aspect to it, just kind of seeing what the other dischargers are up to, and, you know, we get that monthly check and it gets us time to prep, kind of strategize for how we want to address these kind of pretty looming challenges on cleanup issues around the river.
But does any of the $129,000 go towards cleanup or is this just for a lot of talky-talk?
It, it's just to hire the facilitator, essentially to provide technical advice and facilitate the group. So, it's, it's just kind of like a one-contract thing.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
All right. You won the Willy Wonka gold ticket of lots of questions.
No problem, thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the advanced briefing for Monday, April 17, consent agenda is a four-year Master Public Works Maintenance Agreement with Wayne Dalton for annual on-call garage door and electric gate repair, and our presenter is online, is Thea Prince.
Good afternoon, Council President, Councilmembers. What I'm bringing before you today is a four-year master contract for garage door and electric gate repair with Wayne Dalton, $150,000 annually. We did an informal public work quote, there were two responses, and Wayne Dalton was the lowest responsive responsible bidder. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Prince.
Thank you.
Our next item is item seven, it's a contract extension agreement with Archbright Workplace Performance Experts to support our Human Resources Operations Support Team. Our presenter, Mr. Mike Piccolo.
Good afternoon. The HR department is requesting that the consulting contract we had with Archbright and their consultant, Colleen Crajak, be continued for another quarter, another three-month period for an additional cost of $60,000, and this is in large part because of the fact that we still have four vacancies in the department. We filled the director position, obviously, we've been able to fill one of the analyst position, but we're still struggling to fill the four other vacant positions, including the labor analyst, the senior analyst, which are the top two paid positions, and then the two HR analyst ones. So, we have, still have four vacancies. This contract has been amended twice, twice previously, but I just need to say that the services that Archbright is providing for us in this contract is significant. Colleen is embedded in the department, except for time offers, she has her own vacation and does Archbright work, she is embedded in the, in the department, working sometimes Monday through Friday, eight hours a day, so there's a tremendous value to this contract.
So, what continues to be the obstacle? Is it just recruiting or is it civil service? What, what's the?
No, it's not civil service at all. They've done their part, we, HR's done its part. It's, it's just this post-COVID economy where we do the same recruitment, no disrespect to the applicant pool, but it's a different applicant pool. And some of those that are qualified, we're, we're reaching out to them, we're ready to hire them, and then we learn the hard experience that some people are using a job offer from us to bear their position at their current employer.
So, is the value that we're getting for this contract greater than we would be spending on a, on a FTE basis to accomplish the same thing?
It's pretty close. So, Colleen is performing at the highest level. So, if I were to compare her to the HR position, she would be the labor one or the senior position. So, when you add the total compensation package for those positions, it's probably around $180,000 annually, and this will bring her contract to $220,000 total. So, it's, it's, it's close. We are paying a consulting rate, but it's not that far off from what we'd be paying one of our top HR employees.
And if we're continuing to have troubles with recruiting and there's potentially, potentially savings or higher value, would we consider in the long-term contracting out for some of this?
Maybe at, for some specific purposes, services, but this is a city position that we're supposed to fill. It's not, the employers are not members of unions because they have to be exempt from unions because they're working on HR matters, but they are, you know, processed, two of them are processed through civil service. So, they are positions that we're supposed to fill and keep filled with city employees, but there is certainly some work that she is doing that could be continued. For instance, she's done tremendous work with the fire department, the fire union, doing the recruitments, the recruitment process for the incoming firefighters.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
And why are we supposed to fill these positions?
Because if they're, if they're classified positions through civil service and then have been traditional city employees, especially if they're represented by unions, then we're supposed to fill those. Like I said, these two, these positions are not part of a union because they are exempt, but they are part of the city civil service system, at least two of them are. That's primarily the reason.
So, we're just supposed to fill them because they exist?
Well, because they're, they're part of the civil service process. They're, they're positions that have been created, classified through civil service, and the city charter provides that.
Gotcha.
Classified positions are to be filled through civil service.
So, two of the four are through civil service? Is that what you're saying?
At least two, maybe the third one.
Okay.
The highest level one, the labor representative, if, I do not believe that's a classified position. Now, obviously, one of them is going to be the second exempt in the department. You have your department head and then you have your second exempt position. And a lot of the labor work has been performed by John Henry in the absence of the labor analyst.
Okay.
But I think you also said that you need those positions filled. I mean, you're, you're lacking the workforce to get.
Contracting out.
All the work done.
Yes, I mean, ideally, we would have that labor analyst to be working with a special counsel, so we would not need to have the special counsel as involved as Mr. Henry has, has been, so.
Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, Council President. Councilmembers, thank you, Mike, great job. Just to follow up on Mr. Piccolo's comments, the labor relations position is in fact non-classified, it's an exempt position, so we'll be looking to look, to change, we're actually looking to possibly change the title to Deputy Human Resources Director, but we're still kind of working through that now. The reason that we wanted to ask for your consideration here, it's, it's two and a half more months. Colleen Crajak has done an incredible job, but our new Human Resource Director, David Moss, would like some time to do a full assessment of staff, to do a full assessment of resources and things that are needed. By having Archbright there, it will support that effort that he can continue for the next couple of months, get him, get himself steadied on what he thinks are some of the changes that need to be made, and then we would transition out of having Archbright at his side to assist him, and that's, that's the request for the next two months, is to give David, Mr. Moss, a little more time to do some of the assessments that he would like to do with Archbright there supporting him. Thank you. All right then. Item eight and nine is the last two items on the consent agenda for Monday, April 17. Item eight, report of the mayor on pending, 8A, claims and payments of previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library. So, that information will be completed for the council meeting on Monday, April 17. Item 8B, payroll claims of previously approved obligations. That information will also be completed in time for the council's consideration on Monday, April 17. And then finally, item nine will be the city council meeting minutes, information to be presented to the council for action on Monday, April 17. Moving then to resolutions and final reading ordinances. The first item, I believe, was briefed earlier today at Urban Experience, but it's establishing the city's intent to transition the Cannon Street Shelter into a homeless respite facility, and I'll turn to Councilmember Kneer to see if she has anything more to add than what was added at committee earlier.
Between me and Council President, I think we're pretty thorough, so if other council members have questions, see us offline.
All right. Moving then to the next ordinance relating to city council office staff and amending various sections of the Spokane Municipal Code. Council President Beggs.
Yeah, so this is a housekeeping ordinance that would update the ordinance to reflect how we're currently running city council staff. It calls out some specific positions, the director of the city council office, the policy advisor is currently constituted, director of communications, director of budget, and then it mentions the initiative managers, but it doesn't have a specific assignment by topic, it just mentions them. But essentially, those are all central staff, and they would be hired by resolution by a majority of council, and they would only be terminated by majority plus one, is essentially what this does. So, it's how we've been running things the last few years, except the initiative managers and some of the other positions, it's technically been up to the city council president to hire. I don't think I've done that without getting a majority of people on them, but this would just formalize it now that we've been using it for a few years.
All right.
Yeah, sorry, we'll, we'll, I guess we can chat about this offline, but I just have questions on why hiring is just a majority and firing is majority plus one. I think that we could make that consistent, but whichever one we choose, I think is fine, but I think it should be consistent, the majority plus one or majority.
All right, the next final reading ordinance is an administrative action relating to changes from the accounting department to accounting and grants department, and I believe the chief financial officer has previously briefed this at committee. I do not see her now, so I'm not sure if there's any questions of staff. Can have her come down. If not, we can move to the last item on this. All right, then that brings us to a first reading ordinance concerning, concerning ordering for the purpose of drug-related activity and the unauthorized use of controlled substances in public places, and I will turn this over to Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, thank you. Very, I mean, this is very simple. We had a hearing on this last month. It basically allows for our officers to charge gross misdemeanor if open public use in our public spaces occurs, and really it requires that they confiscate any of the substances that are being used. So, very simple, very direct, and really in trying to further the protection of our public spaces.
Yeah, so just, so one concern is the current, as I understand our city code, we adopt state laws as our laws, and the current version of the Blake Response Bill is a misdemeanor instead of gross misdemeanor, and it also has a prohibition against public use. And so, I'm just suggesting that we might put this off a bit until we see what that is and how much of it accomplishes in the state law that we normally adopt, and then secondly, if we've got an issue. We've gotten two different memos from City Legal that are a little bit in conflict of it, but I think it doesn't do any good until we get the, whatever the state law is going to be. So, I'm suggesting we put it off for a little bit, but.
Yeah, I would just say, I mean, right now, it's scheduled for a vote on the 24th, so that's two weeks. A lot can happen in the legislature between now and then that we can always consider, and other things could be considered at that point in time on the, on the 24th, but I would argue that this is such an important thing that we shouldn't, at this moment in time, put it off any further. We need these protections in place. I, I mean, frankly, it's, there are some dangerous situations out there, and when open drug use is happening, volatile situations can, can occur, people can come in contact with very dangerous substances that can harm them intentionally or not, and those are all things that I, I feel like we all up here agree should not be happening under any circumstance, and so I just, I would strongly oppose deferring or delaying because I just think it's important enough for us to, to move on something of this nature.
Councilmember Bingo, and then Councilmembers Apom.
Yeah, and there's plenty of issues that, you know, the city of Spokane has led on that the state has followed. You know, there's a number of issues since I- that the state has followed. You know, there's a number of issues since I've been on council, but plenty before then, you know, sick leave stuff is stuff that the city adopted before the state did. We didn't wait for the state on their remedies to landlord-tenant stuff. We moved forward with it. I think that there is plenty of precedent for us to move forward with something we feel is right for our community and then see what the state does later. And so I think that there's, there's plenty to go forward. And I mean, the more that we look into this, I mean, the more that we begin to understand how much public drug use is actually happening. One of the most shocking stats is, is that, you know, we have two needle exchanges in the city of Spokane, the regional health department being one of them. In 2020 alone, the regional health department exchanged 1.855 million needles. Okay, almost 2 million needles in 2020 alone. Same number in 2021. I mean, we're giving up millions of needles a year that are actually being, they're not necessarily being exchanged at the, at the health department. By their own stats, last year, 9% were not returned. If you did 9% of 2 million, I mean, you're talking hundreds of thousands of needles not being returned that are left in the parks, left on the streets, left in the river, left in garbage cans. And it's all made easier by the fact that, that you can do drugs in public without, without really any legitimate response. So I think we need to move forward with that.
And I'll let the other councilmembers raise here. But just to clarify, my concern is not that whether we'd be leading or not, it's just that if we would be doing something illegal, which is a difference, that's my, from the memos that I've read from City Legal, that's my concern, is that I don't want us to put something in place that is illegal and gets us up to the Supreme Court. That's how we got the Blake decision, is our county prosecutor took a crazy case to the Supreme Court, and that's what got it. So I, that's my worry. So it's not about whether we're leading it. But councilmembers upon.
Yeah, I wanted to make a motion to defer this to the May 22 meeting. So that would be.
I don't think there is a May 22 meeting, so maybe the week before, because it's the
The 15?
Memorial Day, I think.
No, 29th is Memorial.
Is it? Okay, all right.
So 22nd would be the week before Memorial Day.
Second. Okay.
Can I comment now?
Yeah.
So here's my, here's my big concern about this, because I lived through the safe and sick leave. I would, I would want to know how long it would take SPD to stand this up, whether, because there's got to be training, you've got to change things internally, you go through all of that. The message gets out to the public, let's say we pass this, message gets out to the public, and then we've got some time that SPD has to get it up and running. And then the state comes in and passes something that we have to bow to. That's my only concern, because that's kind of a little bit what happened with safe and sick leave. And where I felt the most regret was with my constituents that I had been working with and talking to and getting them prepared for what we were going to pass. And then it, the state came in, and the states were a little tighter regulations than what we had passed. So it was just kind of a, a lot of jibber jabber and a lot of trying to get people back up to speed under a different, that's my big concern. And I don't know how long it would take SPD to set this up.
Councilmember Kinnear, and then councilmember Cathcart, and then councilmember Bingel.
And I think this is well-intentioned. I think we all agree that we don't want people shooting up in our parks. We do already have an ordinance that forbids that. So we passed that, what, two years ago, three years ago, whatever it was. So we already have that. So we're talking about essentially downtown public spaces, not parks, because parks already has that. The other piece was when we passed the parks one, and I asked the parks director, I said, so are you going to be enforcing drinking in the parks? I said, because we have, you guys have your Audubon concert under the pines, and we had Comstock's, you know, thing where everybody brings alcohol. It's a park. You can't do that. And I was told, well, we just look the other way for that, because everybody's there, they're having a good time. And I guess I have a problem with two sets of standards. So if you're going to prohibit drugs, in other words, illegal drugs, and we already have a drinking in public, a prohibition against drinking in public or smoking cannabis in public, but we're not enforcing that, I have a little bit of a problem with that. And how are we going to, how are we going to marry those two and make sure that we're enforcing equally every Friday and Saturday night, there's a drink fest at Comstock. I've asked patrol, please go up there. They're drinking and they're driving. Nothing. I get nothing. So I want some assurance, this is actually going to be enforced. And what is the time, as you said, Councilmember Stratton, what's the time to stand this up? Because if we're going to pass this, go through all the stuff that we have to do, the state comes, does their thing, and SPD is then going to say, well, this is great, we don't have the staff to enforce this. I want some guarantees. I want to hear from them, yes, we're going to enforce this, and this is how we're going to do it. So I'm supportive of this, but I don't see that it's going to be enforced.
Councilmember Cathcart, and then councilmember Bingel.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would say we've had a two-tier system ever since prohibition was repealed, where we treat things very differently in a lot of ways. But we've, I think societally, culturally, we've always treated alcohol a little bit differently. So, you know, and we can express that in code or not, and we can have that discussion on what we should enforce and how. But my concern goes just beyond belligerence. I mean, there are literal dangers to society, our community, when you've got fentanyl. That's my concern, is fentanyl that's out there that could be inhaled through secondhand, that could be touched and then ingested. I, I mean, that to me, it scares the life out of me. As a dad, as somebody who's out there with my kid walking around, it scares the bejesus out of me. I do not want that stuff around. So that's my incentive here. It's not just belligerence, but also, you know, I mean, we've, so you made the comment about parks, but we also, I remember watering that ordinance down because, and it didn't go as far as it should have with real stiff penalties. So while there is some prohibition, there are no penalties. Part of the benefit of this, one is it actually requires that we confiscate the substances, which is not required under law and does not happen every time, by the way, because it can be an inconvenience. This requires it, so it puts that onus on our officers. They must confiscate it, which I think is critical. But then it gives them the tool with an actual penalty that could be meaningful and leverage to hopefully not put them in jail, but to get them help and put them in treatment, which is the real, I think, goal that most of us have. And, and when you don't have a stiff penalty at the end, there's no leverage. There's no way to do it. And in the next six weeks, till this is deferred, you know, I mean, how many dangerous encounters might we have in those public spaces? I would rather get this going now. And if the state wants to tell us, no, we're not going to let you protect your community, then that's on them. But we should take the effort right now and say, no, not here, not in Spokane. You're not going to be sitting out in our plazas, our sidewalks, our parks, our wherever, and doing drugs and putting our community, our families, my son, at risk. I'm just, I'm tired of it. We've got to say no.
Councilmember Bingel.
Kinnear can respond if she wants to.
Go ahead, council.
I don't disagree. I'm not disagreeing with you. I want to know how it's going to be enforced. We do not have, and you've seen what, what patrol goes to over a period of their shift, and things are lined up. That is going to be far down the list. They have to be there at the time that that person is actually ingesting or shooting or whatever they're doing. How, I want some assurance from SPD that they're going to have the staff to do that and show us what, what is your technique going to be? So are you going to station patrol officers around downtown and just watch people? How is this going to work exactly? Because I don't have any insurance, assurance that it's going to be enforced. That is, that is unforgivable. When we pass stuff and it's not enforced, that makes me mad as well. And I, I hear you. I don't, I support it. I just want to know from SPD how they're going to enforce this.
Well, can we, can we bring Chief Mydl or Lundgren here? And I mean, I'd be happy to have them here next Monday to talk about how they would.
Yeah, I'm fine. I want, I would like details.
Council President.
I've got Councilmember Bingel first, and then.
And I was nice enough to let somebody jump.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. So.
It was noticed.
It's my deep respect and love for my councilmember. No, I, you bring up a fair point on drinking and things being, you know, differently, you know, enforced, again, like Councilmember Cathcart. I'm happy to have those discussions. I think it's a, it's a fair point. If we have a standard, let's be consistent with that. I totally agree with you. And I think there actually is real, real dangers with drinking in public too, if like you're drinking in a glass bottle and somebody breaks that. That's a real danger to somebody in the street. You don't disagree with that. That might be something that we address in the future, maybe no glass bottles of alcohol in public, you know, you can't drink out of glass bottles. I don't know. I'm just spitballing here. But that's another, it's another topic for another day. But I, the chief has told me that there, that they would be ready to go tomorrow if we, if we, if we pass this. But if, if we're worried about the fact that this is going to be lowered on the, on the list of offenses, what I'm hearing is a plug for 70 more officers. That's what I'm hearing here today, is that we need more officers to be able to enforce our laws. I hear that in these concerns. And lastly, my ear to the ground, what I've heard is that the state, the state Blake bill is dead, is that it's not actually going to go through. There is nothing that's actually going to happen on that. That concerns me a lot, because then we say, okay, well, let's wait to make it happen, and it never happens.
Maybe we can get an update. Maybe Eric can get us an update next week.
I just got, I'm interrupting, but I just did check with our lobbyist an hour ago. And it's, you know, it's in the House currently.
But not looking good.
It, well, no, it's amended. I wouldn't say it's not looking good. It's just, it's a little bit like the Pursuit Bill. There's people in the, instead of going to the middle ground and doing the moderate thing, there are people on both extremes that are unwilling. So there's Republicans that won't vote for it because it's not tough enough, and there's Democrats that won't vote for it.
Because it's too tough.
It's too tough in their minds, and those are on the extremes. The middle does, but the question is, is there enough of a middle to be an actual majority on it? And the answer is, we don't know yet. We'll know in two weeks. We'll have a pretty good sense of it. And, you know, anything that we passed in a few weeks from now would only, you know, would take 30 days for it to go into effect. So I don't think that we're really getting too behind on it. We could also make it, once we know what the legislature does, we can make it an emergency if we wanted to, so it could go into effect immediately. I also just note, I sent, I think a week or so ago, a request to SPD, like, tell me, how are you enforcing public use of cannabis, which up until not too long ago was an illegal drug, alcohol, and actually other drugs? Because actually, the police can confiscate right now. They can enforce right now. It's, it's a little clunky on getting someone to court right now, but they can actually enforce. And I want to know, did they, what did they enforce prior? Most, I think the police officers have told us that most possession charges are not them seeing someone doing it. They said it's, they arrest them for something else, and in their backpack they find. That's most possession. They don't actually arrest people even before the Blake came out. They weren't arresting people for personally using drugs. They weren't doing that, according to the, I forget his, I think he's a lieutenant who came down and talked to us. So I do, I would love, we can get Chief Mydl or someone else next week, regardless, give us an update. What have you been doing? Hopefully, they'll get me that data, and we can share that out and say, okay, and, and what are you going to do? And is it 70 police officers that you need? And until we get 70, it's not really worth doing? Or what, you know, what is your, because it feels a little bit, I think we all share the concern, but it feels like we want to feel like we're doing something, whether or not we actually are going to do something actually meaningful. I think that's the challenge, and often the challenge for legislative branch, because we don't implement. So, but I'll go back to councilmembers upon.
Thanks, Council President. I just wanted to remind us, the motion is to defer, just to remind us. But also, I made a request to the mayor last, or two weeks ago, that at the briefing when this came up, that the police would be here to explain and answer these questions. I don't see anybody from SPD here. So I find that frustrating that if we're going to have a genuine conversation about this. So far, it's only been councilmembers Bingel and Cathcart explaining this, and we have not heard from the administration at all on how this would be implemented. And that's concerning, so I think that's part of the deferral. But it sounds like we're going to have that by request from council, even though I've already made that request and the administration has not delivered. So again, the reason for deferral, that allows the two weeks for the legislature to decide so that we don't pass an illegal law. It then allows us a week or two, two weeks before the first, before advanced hearing, that we can digest and see how it would be implemented here at the city. And then it would go to advanced, and then first and second for the May 22. So that's why I chose that date.
I'll second.
Okay, well, it's.
Our second already.
It's already second.
Already seconded, okay.
So any other discussion about the motion to defer until May 22?
I want to ask Mr.
Perkins.
What's his name?
Perkins.
Perkins. I would like to ask you, what are the, what are the odds that we'll get police here to answer some of our questions?
You, I guarantee they'll be here.
Next week?
Yes, ma'am. They will be here.
Prepared to answer our questions?
Prepared to answer.
You understand that.
I do. I took a lot of notes as y'all were talking.
Okay.
And yes, the chief and representatives of the department and those in the administration in the mayor's office who have been working on this will be here to address all the questions.
And I will be asking why they haven't enforced up to now.
And, and I wrote that note down as well, because I'd like to know that answer myself.
Yeah. I mean, I've been asking for a year. Okay.
If this is deferred until May 22, what would they be here addressing, I'm wondering?
It would be addressing this.
But it wouldn't be on our agenda, so that's why I'm wondering.
We'll create space for them. Yeah.
Well, in light of, oh, sorry. In light of us, I think we should wait till after we talk to the police before we defer or make a motion to defer anything.
Well, it'd be on, it'd be on the hearing for that day.
Well, it's first reading next week.
Yeah, but I think it makes it more confusing for the public if we don't know. So like.
Know what?
If we don't know what's happening in the legislature at the same time. So like, we, I feel like we have to wait to know what the legislature is going to do. Even the police department won't really know what they can do until we know what the law is from the state. So like, I was going to allow that discussion, or my motion is to allow that discussion after the legislature adjourns, so that we would know. The police could come and give us an update. This is the new law. This is how we'll implement it. I don't see a discussion next week. They won't know what the legislature is going to do, so they can tell us a first round of that conversation, but we still won't know what the legislature is going to do by next week.
They could give us a report on what they have and haven't been doing and why.
But we know what they haven't been doing.
Well, it'd be good to get their version of what they have and haven't been doing.
But we will also come prepared to discuss how we will implement this should this ordinance and law move forward. We will plan to come prepared for both.
I don't mean to be argumentative, but we, we have laws on the books right now regarding substances in parks and public places that are not being enforced. So the credibility is.
Understand. We will do our best to address that gap in confidence and restore that.
Maybe we'll have a legislative update then too, or something.
Well, who knows? That's a week away. Any, but I'm fine with just having them come talk at briefing regardless. We could just have them talk regardless. So motion is to defer to the 22nd. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 No.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Yeah.
Okay. I think that fails.
I'll make another motion then.
Okay.
I'll defer until the eighth. So that would allow that, at the 24th, which is the end of session, that would be an advanced briefing, so then it can go to first hearing on the first, and then voted on the second. So that it aligns closer with the legislative calendar.
I see, yeah.
Because I think if we have it at first reading, it'll be in the press, it'll be in the news. People start coming down to testify, and they won't know what they're testifying on, because it could be an illegal law that they would be testifying in support of.
No.
So you're, just to be clear, your motion is to defer first reading to the first and final reading until the eighth?
Yes.
Unless it's an emergency.
Okay.
You could put it on as an emergency.
Sure.
Okay.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Cathcart.
I, again, I mean, I think the same thing as the last. If, if we're going to hear next week on how this will move forward, let's wait and hear how it'll move forward. And then if you don't like the answers, then you can delay it all you want. But at least give our, you know, police and the administration an opportunity to address this before we decide to kick the can down the road. I just, I, this is just too important for us to just keep pushing off, so.
Any other council commentary?
Just a quick comment. So I concur with Councilmember Kinnear. They have a lot of tools in their toolbox that maybe have not been used that could address some of this, but we still do not talk about going upstream, and we still don't hear about education. So we're just really upstream, down the road, dog chasing his tail. Until we kind of get there, we've got to go upstream. But the tools are there. And as it sits now, which I didn't say earlier, I got some concerns made about the interpretation of some of this ordinance, especially for BIPOC community going forward. Like Councilmember Kinnear said, are they just sitting there watching it? What are they waiting? So I know the Equity Committee plans on reviewing it at their meeting, which is the first week in May. So anyway, that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Councilmember Bingel. Councilmember Ring?
Yeah, again, I just, I think that it's, it's smart to move forward with it. We hear, we hear the update, and we actually, we are working on the upstream stuff. You know, we've all talked about, you know, funding for youth drug prevention programs. Mr. Wright and I had a conversation on this the other day about actual funding sources for tech to get it moving forward and get it moving forward quickly. And so this is stuff that we're not just saying, hey, we're going to, we're going to deal with this right now. But this is an active part of, of my body of work as well, is how do we get this done? Because that is an important component of this. How do we tell kids, hey, by the way, drugs are real bad for you. It's not good for you. And also, at the same time, when people are doing it, creating unsafe conditions, we also have to address that. And so I, I think there is work being done on, on upstream and downstream, because both are very important. And so again, what, what I'm hearing is that the Blake bill is dead. I think we can get the updates from SPD next week. Like Councilmember Cathcart said, if we're not satisfied with what SPD and the administration say next week, we can always defer and then move forward. But I think there's plenty of reason for us to be moving forward with this, because, I mean, it is a real danger, not only to the individuals using it, but the rest of the community that lives in the world where this is happening, you know? And again, speaking of upstream, when children are seeing people openly using drugs next to the place that they live, and this is a regular part of their society, this is a regular part of their routine, this is a regular thing that they see every day, this becomes normalized to them that this behavior is okay or acceptable, and it's not. So there are actual real upstream ways that this ordinance will help upstream as well, not just downstream. I think this makes a lot of sense for us to move forward.
Councilmember Sapun?
Yeah, I heard Councilmember Sapun said this has not gone to the Equity Subcommittee. I'm just wondering what advisory groups has this gone to for community outreach and feedback?
It's gone, it's gone to committee.
So just committee?
Yeah.
So it has not gone to any community outreach?
It came to finance.
Finance committee, but that was it.
Gone to finance.
So I think that's another reason for more deferrals, for more community outreach on something that we haven't had.
You think the public wants public drug use? Is that what your concern is?
I don't think that's what I said.
No, I, it's not what you said, but it's, but you're waiting for public engagement on legalizing or not legalizing public drug use? I'm just trying to understand, what, what's the input specifically?
I, I brought up at Finance Committee that I had some questions about the equity and how this impacts marginalized and historically marginalized communities, and we have yet to hear any outreach to those communities, to hear from them directly about how this could impact them. But I think everybody agrees, no one wants people to be using drugs on the street.
It is illegal, actually, currently, so.
Right, but we're, we're changing policy to say that police must do this, that they must confiscate, those kinds of things. There are, there are real changes in this that are different. And again, if everybody agrees up here, if everybody agrees that they're constituents, if everybody, then that, I think, is the public outreach in and of itself. If we have all talked to our constituents, and they all say, yes, this is something we want to move forward with, not to say that it can't go to those committees, right? But, but again, as has been our standard here, if something's, you know, bad, we can always come back and, and fix it.
Council President? Can I just point out that we've had more discussion about whether we should hear this, both at committee and now, than we've actually even heard from administration or anybody in the community about how this law would be implemented? So I think most times when people come with ordinances to us, they're telling us how it's going to be implemented, and we vet it. This one seems to be rather saying, hey, council, if you don't support this, then you're for open drug use, rather than proving how this ordinance is going to work.
All right, is there any other discussion between the motion to defer first reading to the first, final reading to the eighth? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay. So I think that was five to two, deferred to the first, and then the eighth for final reading. But we will create space for anyone from the police department and/or City Legal to talk about these issues.
And they will be here.
Okay.
Sir, that concludes our advanced briefing for Monday, April 17.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt the advanced agenda as modified?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay. Any abstentions? All right. That is approved. And then now we're briefing today's agenda, right? Probably should have started with that, but.
All right. Thank you, Council President. Members of the City Council, this is the advanced briefing for this evening's council session, Monday, April 10. Consent item number one, low bid of inland infrastructure for the Holland Avenue Sewer Normandy to Colton project. Again, our presenter is Dan Buller.
Good afternoon again. Item one's proposed low bid contract with inland infrastructure of Spokane for the Holland Avenue Sewer Project for $5,640,705 plus tax, to which we propose to set aside a 10% administrative reserve. The public will allow the sewer department to decommission and remove an existing sewage lift station, which over the long run will save a fair amount of money, as lift stations are expensive to operate. Two bids were received. The low bid was about 1.07 or 17% below the engineer's estimate. This work is expected to start later this spring and last through the summer. The portion beneath Highway 2 and Division Street will be tunnelled so as not to impact traffic on those high-volume roads, but the work on Holland will require detours.
Thank you, Mr. Buller. Item number two, two A, B, and C are recommendations to list three properties to the Spokane Registry of Historic Places. Our presenter online, Megan Duval.
Good afternoon. Thanks so much. These three properties were all briefed at the Urban Experience Meeting on March 13th, and followed up with the Spokane Historic Landmarks Commission on March 15th, and all three were recommended for listing on the Spokane Register.
Thank you, Ms. Duval. Next up on the April 10th, advanced briefing agenda for this evening's council session. Item three is a contract with the Friends of KSPS. And item four is a reimbursement contract with community-minded enterprises for the city's community access television channel. Our presenter from our Cable 5 team is Jeff Bolinger.
Thank you. Thank you, Administrator. Thank you, Council President, esteemed council. I'm here to ask for your, to disperse funds for KSPS and City Cable TV, City Community-Minded TV. I, I think you guys all know how the PEG funds work, where the city franchise agreement with the cable providers, funds are used for PEG, for public education and government use. Funds are distributed to you. Funds are split sort of between three entities, us at City Cable 5, which makes this very broadcast possible, KSPS for their educational programming, and CMTV for the community programming in the public interest. And KSPS is asking for 68,300, and CMTV is asking for their share of $70,000 out of the PEG funding. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bolinger.
Thank you.
Great job. Items five and six. Item five, contract renewal with Encapsulate LLC for customer relationship management system. Item six, a sole-source contract renewal with Oracle America. Our presenter representing our IT department, Mr. Laz Martinez.
Good afternoon. So the first contract is for Encapsulate. This company provides to us the hosting and day-to-day system support for the CRM 311 system that we have. The cost of the contract is a little bit more than $106,000. And the second contract is for Oracle. The second contract covers Peoplesoft, which is human resources, and, and as well as the Oracle database for the utility billing system. And the second contract is around $206,000. Oracle usually increases the cost of that contract roughly 4%, every year. So those are the two. Any questions? Good?
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Item seven, A, B, C, report of the mayor pending, A, claims and payments of previously approved obligations through March 24. Seven, B, claims and payments of previously approved obligations through March 31. Seven, C, payroll claims of previously approved obligations through April 1st. All the dollar amounts are completed, and the council will consider those this evening. Item eight, city council meeting minutes for February 27, March 6, March 13, and March 27. That will also be considered by council at this evening's session. Moving then to special budget ordinances. Up first is an ordinance, action arises from the need to adjust pay ranges to align with salary analysis. Our presenter again is Mr. Mike Piccolo.
Good afternoon. So this item was briefed a couple of weeks ago at one of the council committees. This deals with the quarterly pay ranges at the HR Department of Performance, where we go through, we look at different positions, where the job work has, has changed, and we adjust the salaries accordingly. Most of the time, the, the changes are very minimal from the, the pay range is from step one to step six. We try to bring this to the council, at least on a quarterly basis. I think we've kind of slipped up with the changes in staffing. We have not been before the council recently on this one, so we're trying to get back into that habit of bringing this forward quarterly. With this SBL, then the Finance Department can implement these changes throughout the budget. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Piccolo. Our next item is an action to accept Administrator Office of the Court's additional grant. Sarah Thompson was here prior to Easter to present at a committee session on that item. So without questions, we'll move then to the final reading ordinances. First one up is establishing the requirements for the unallocated reserve balance within the general fund. And I'll turn to Council President Beggs.
Well, I'm just going to, Councilmember Cathcart, did you have a substitution on that?
Yes, actually, two. So, yeah, first I'll move that we substitute for the substitute version that was circulated this afternoon.
Second.
Thank you. It's, it's some minor tweaks to the language, nothing overly substantive. And then after, after this, I will also make a motion to suspend the rules specifically for one additional amendment that we would, actually, two, very, and again, these are not overly substantive, but amendments recommended by, by Matt, so just kind of bring those forward.
All right. Any discussion on the motion to substitute? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, substituted. There are motion to substitute, excuse me, suspend the rules for purposes of amending the ordinance further?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved to second. Any discussion? All those in favor of suspending the rules indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Rules are suspended.
And then I, so I would make a motion that we would amend the ordinance to include under C2, under C2, it would say focused discussion on current year. So that would be one change. And then the other, under C3, would say, it would start off saying, by the May Finance and Administration Committee meeting, and then continue on with as it currently is. So those are the two tweaks.
And before we vote on it, can you circulate that?
Yep.
To the clerk and everyone?
Absolutely.
Okay? Any dis, oh, is there a second?
I second.
You seconded, sorry. Is there any discussion? All right. All those in favor of the additional language amendments indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Okay, that's so amended. Okay.
All right. Thank you. Our next two items under final reading ordinances, I believe these were both also briefed at committee previously, but they're to grant non-exclusive franchises for the use of the public right of way to MCI Metro and to Fat Beam LLC. And in case the council has any questions, we have from the City Attorney's Office, Mr. Tim Zamblin.
Good, good afternoon. Ordinance C 36360 is a 10-year franchise agreement with MCI Access Transmission Service, also known as Verizon. They've been currently operating in Spokane for at least 15 years under a franchise that expired, and this is a renewal. Ordinance C 36361 is a franchise agreement with Fat Beam LLC, and they're coming into Spokane, and their primary focus is working with District 81 and putting fiber in to increase District 81's capacity. Any questions on those two ordinance?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zamblin. And Council President, the final two items as raised to this evening's council session for Monday, April 10. First reading ordinances, both have been discussed previously in briefing. And so that concludes our advanced briefing for Monday, April 10.
All those in favor of adopting tonight's legislative agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right. That is approved. We are going to have a executive session to discuss actual potential litigation with City Legal Department. I'm thinking 20, I'm wondering here, 15 minutes, 20 minutes?
20 minutes, I think.
Okay, 20 minutes. So we'll be at 4:55 by the clock in council chambers.